How you're applying that chemical. And we're also looking at buying some of these products ourselves to understate contract to save, and also saving sales tax.
What do they do, go out and grid it off and then take like split spoon samples?
They use split spoon samples and then also do milli equivalents in infrared from above to look at the soil patterns. And when you have fields like ours that were constructed at different times, that's what they grapple with too. The amount of water you're putting on them. You know, it's like one size doesn't fit all out there. We really need to tailor a lot of that maintenance and those heads and those irrigation schedules to the soil conditions to each field. But so I think we can make some big changes and maybe even save some money in the process. That's good. And Kenny, if you want to come up and just talk briefly, we have a lot of things going on.
Do you have to?
Kenny Hall, the county manager. I just wanted, I'm gonna go touch on the Sony Brook Master Station is completed. As far as the Thompson bypass pump is in operational, it's in condition. We've been running it twice a week. We ran it all day yesterday. Looks like a champ. We are still waiting on the permitting for fencing to get approved. It went through once and got rejected. Now it's back in for a second round for both fences at Station One and Station Two. We, after the fencing goes in, the driveway is a woman right behind them. And that should be done within a month, hopefully. And then that was about mostly, hopefully within a month or two, depending on what they come back with permitting on the fencing. It failed because of the slats. They can, the county will not approve it with slag for whatever reason. We, it took, it took, it was about six months before we're behind schedule before we got that pump, so we could not do the fencing. We had to get the pump in and operational before we figured out where we're going to actually put the gates and how we're going to situate it because of the way it's situated, the way the piping sits, and access for maintenance. So, once that is, now that's done, we get through permitting, we'll lay the driveways for the two stations that are to be done on that. So that, that should be done with, I would say by the end of August, hopefully, hopefully. Completed, one hundred percent completed. And that was basically all of the fire hydrants. I'll touch on that. Most all of the fire hydrant repairs were done last year. We did, we did over a hundred repairs within repairing and lifting, getting them up to code. South Trail has really helped us a lot in flow testing. They're in here all the time. I would say two times a week in here flow testing. If they find any issues, they are not shy. They will let us know right away. We had, contractors aren't running them over, knocking them off their stands. Our, our plan is to eliminate the Mueller. We have four different types of fire hydrants in our system. And we're trying to get rid of the Mueller's as they, if they, especially the Mueller Crown Royal Three series. For whatever reason, there are thirty-two of them in our system. Yeah, for whatever, whatever reason, there's thirty-two of them in our system. If they break, it is next to impossible to get replacement parts for them. So, we have, we're replacing them. They were put in between ninety-one and ninety-six. That series Mueller, for whatever reason, they put them in, they are next to impossible to get replacement parts for. So, we, with those, we are trying to convert them out to American Darlings, which is our, our bread and butter. The majority of the hydrants we have, over seventy percent are of the American Darling class. So, we are trying to convert them over to the, to the American Darling.
I wonder who comes up with the names for these.
The manufacturer. But, you know, a lot of the repairs, we started out now with our staff, we can do ourselves. Which saves a lot of time and money. We, with our new hires, we are able to do this a lot on the road. And then with the sewer cleanouts and the Camry, we are still, we are still doing that on a regular, I'd say a weekly basis, monthly basis. Our last one was in storms with a tree job. Green, I believe it was green stone, but that's very common. As we go along, we find them in there again with our staff. A lot of times, if it doesn't get too expansive, we can do it ourselves now. So, that's with our new employees. And that was basically all I had for this round.
Any questions, Chris? You had a question for Cruz?
Yeah, I didn't know if he's gonna do it. Are you going to bring up the meeting with the county on the roundabouts?
Oh, I could hand it out. I'm sure I'd be happy to. And basically, Mr. Tinkelman and I attended the first meeting with the county where they handed out, and they're up on the wall, and copies are available, the conceptual plans for the roundabouts. And it's a very interesting presentation. I think one part that came up was, was more interesting is there was a second part of the engineer in there who was giving some value engineering and review. And someone said, why is he here? And the county said, well, we've never designed a two-lane roundabout before, so we don't want to screw it up.
That, that took the cake. And, and, and what better took the cake was, this was supposed to be a thirty percent design. We were, we had done Commerce Lakes first, and then Howard Center Road. We were about forty, forty-five minutes, got it. They said, well, we'll wrap up, go down the way. I said, please. We've sat here now for forty-five minutes and not one person has said anything about all our utilities around here. The engineer was like, huh? I hadn't even checked the fact that we, that, that we had utilities that had been there.
Gas line.
Gas line, all, all that stuff there. So, anyway, then the other one was, as you all know, if you drive that road in either the morning or the afternoon, Commerce Lakes Drive going east to Gateway Boulevard, there is a massive number of cars that turn left. It's very dangerous. But what they're doing on this design, you will see, is they're squeezing Commerce Lakes down to one lane, and it's gonna essentially go right, and anybody who wants to go left says, the queue is gonna get real long because the people that want to go left are gonna hold up the people that want to go right, they could flow in. I said, where did you get your data? Oh, it doesn't show that there's any problem here. What was it, nineteen, twenty sixteen, and flow data, traffic data?
Why do we need a roundabout if there isn't any problems here?
So, they're, so they're going to go, the county authorized to go back and do a traffic study. But then we switch to Griffin. And said, well, same issue, same issue. People coming to left off of Griffin going on Gateway Boulevard, what type cars, doesn't show all that, same data. How, how are you planning on handling the school?
What school? Yeah, I knew you were gonna say.
The charter school?
Yeah. No, the high school.
High school down by eighty-two.
It's like, scratch your head, like, what did I do, take, go through a time warp when I came in here? I had never seen engineering that would come up with a thirty percent plan of a layout and not include, and that we didn't have any property lines. This comes out, this comes out after the meeting or otherwise, it really had a hemorrhage. When you come off of Gateway Boulevard and turn onto Griffin, okay? And then you do a quickie into Seven-Eleven. That road, according to LIPA, that's all on Gateway, CDB property. They have built the road outside their property. And the same thing going into Seven-Eleven. The road going in, according to LIPA.
The stretch?
That, the one that's got by the little air pump, that little shortened deal? That's on Timber Ridge Property Owners Association. The reason I'm bringing that up is that with the new road that the county's gonna do off the roundabout, the transition goes into where that road is at. And what they want to do is to move their entrance further to the east. Hell, it's gonna be more than our property, and it already is. They hadn't checked that. Bottom line is, they didn't, they didn't put any property identifications on the deal. Across the street, the fire department, boy, they had to change there too. They came, I think they came here and told us, there will be a stoplight. That, that is different now. They're going to accept the roundabout. The thing is, they want to have an ingress back into their site after they go through the roundabout and turn right into their building, so they have a flow group and go out. Well, if you go out there and look at now where the, what is that, kinder care, whatever that is, at school? Well, you're gonna be coming out of the roundabout immediately turning right. The only way I see them gonna do it is they're gonna have to have a desecration lane, which means every one of those trees are gonna go out. I don't know how they're gonna do this stuff. But the, the bottom line is, I've got Troy the drainage. After the meeting, he gets an email from, when the engineer was at the meeting, it was the higher-up engineer. I think the higher-up, it really, it's shaky. I think it's the error in service. The guy will say something about the drainage. Well, out there or down there, on both of those intersections, the drainage is, is essentially V-ditches. The roads are covering the V-ditches. How are they gonna drain that?
Why don't they just decide this is impossible and put lights up?
What I'd like to see them do is, why don't you come out to the field and look what you're designing?
Yeah, we don't like to do that.
I've never seen anything done like this.
We don't like to do that.
It's called SR eighty-two, Ed. SR eighty-two is a beautiful six-lane highway.
Well, and then the, the last one, I knew this was coming because all the design standards, I've got some of the books that I had from my, my office on designing these. The typical two-lane merging roundabout, recommended distance is a hundred and fifty feet to two hundred and thirty feet in diameter. Our right-of-way is one fifty. So, they're squeezing this in. So, the question came up at the meeting, and the engineer was truthful. He was, I will say that, he was truthful. You will not get a semi and a car through the roundabout in any of these roundabouts. Not in that area. So, when a semi is going through the roundabout.
Let him go.
You better let him go, or otherwise you're gonna have some scratches alongside your car because you won't fit. But why I bring all this up and what Chris was talking about, they challenged us. We're responsible for the street signs. And this scares me because I asked one of the guys in my office about signs, how many signs there are on a roundabout. You've got a lot of signs. And the decorative signs we have, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars, maybe a little more per crack. You might have twenty of those signs in each of those fields. So, we're gonna have to get our checkbook out on that. I sure don't want to see those roundabouts, those standard Lee County steel post signs that looks like should be out there in some other part of the county. And then the last one was that they want us to come up with some group committee, whatever, to discuss how we're going to landscape this when it's all done. And what they're specifically looking at predominantly is the center. They want that center, a little bit different what most people would think. They want that center such that it is a.
Visual barrier.
Well, it's not only visual. They don't want people driving through it. So, they want something like, I suggested a monument and/or a big water fountain. Something, I, I hate trees in there for then, anything that requires irrigation, because then it gets to be a mess. But what they want to know is, when they get it further down, they're gonna want to know a point of contact here of what the vision is for the landscaping. Which, again, we pick up the tab.
How about a big pit? So, then if somebody does run through it.
So, how can we have air raiders?
Anyway, it was enlightening, but.
And they are on a fast track.
Yes, they're.
Talking about December finishing their design and putting out the bid in January.
And starting in April. And then the next project, that, that's Commerce Lakes, and then they go back to back. But their deal was, they don't want to do any of it in season, any of the construction. I was asking them questions about the, how are you going to do this? Both those roads, when you're doing a roundabout, typically what you want to do is close the road off and bypass. There are no bypasses in Gateway. You're coming up Gateway Boulevard, you're, you're SOL. If you're on Griffin and you're going at that deal, you've gotta go all the way back to eighty-two, down to Tree Line and around it. There's no bypass. So, they're gonna have to switch stuff going back and forth.
Can you imagine the first day of school when you're working on that?
Oh, it's, it's going to be.
Because it's more than just season. That road gets crazy once school opens, and it's constant.
Well, their time, they want to do the work is in the summertime, when the worst weather's going to be here. But there is no, they said, what, six to eight months to do that roundabout. So, if they start in vague, they're going to be coming in too season and to start school and be in construction, so.
SR eighty-two.
And stoplights looking better and better.
SR eighty-two.
Maybe convince them. Talk to your buddy Cecil.
I know, that's, you were talking to Cecil. Talk to him about that.
Talk to him about that.
I, I hope Cecil's got a lot of salt and pepper and heat and crow for when this thing's built.
Well, Tony disappeared. I was gonna bring his task off his puppy neck. So, let's go to consent agenda, and we'll come back in a moment. These are minutes in financial report. Anybody have anything they want to pull?
I have just a question.
Okay.
How about the places that are empty in the minutes that you put great, that you just left because you couldn't hear anything?
I thought those got corrected.
I don't know if it's corrected. I know they had, we had an issue with the recorder, and it did not pick up the sound for a while. And what we started doing is having a backup in meetings.
That's what I was gonna say, instead of trying to do all this, this thing isn't a transcript. It's minutes. So, if we get a backup on a tape, that should be sufficient.
And, and that's what we're doing. And also, in the next couple of weeks, our sound system's gonna be totally redone in here. And we'll be picking up the microphones from here, broadcasting the sound out so the audience can hear better. And we'll have redundant recording facilities. But if it's not in there, we do not have a tape to reconstruct.
Okay, because it's Agenda Page one thirty-two, that says, at last attendance.
I'm just, I'm just. So, anybody else want to discuss anything else on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Consent agenda item seven A B N C?
Yes.
Second?
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any of them? That brings us back to you, Tony. You had your.
Appreciate it. Yes, I'm, any questions? Still waiting, revised bill of sale for the green phase two improvement, so this is to take off some of the items. That way we can wrap everything. All the documents are ready, the settlement agreement, grant agreement, everything else. They just need to get the revised bill of sale. But we do not have that bill of sale yet, and the warranty period will start once we get that bill of sale. There are issues we have to hear from that date. With regards to the road turnover, we just need to set up another meeting with those property owners from the, the Tallex and Industrial condominium, to go over what possible costs might be, and come back and board with the recommendation as they course of conduct.
Is Commerce Lakes?
Yes, because they're interested in possibly reconstituting the association for the sole purpose of conveying the road to a track. And Chris has some numbers for the.
The assessment that has been made, paving and the print striping.
That issue came up at the meeting with the county, and they were misinformed. They weren't aware that we owned Commerce Lakes that portion. They thought they were gonna be dealing with the POA, so they kind of agreed a sigh of, sigh of relief on that. But then, when they got up here to, to Griffin, they found out that Fairway Lakes Office Park is a POA that's dissolved. So, I don't know what they're gonna do there. They, they've got a mess there, and that's immensely tight right of way, which raises a question. Where is Fairway Lakes Office Park also in the, that turnover?
If I recall correctly, that's one of them, we had the issue with regards to the D that the association at WCI could contend. I've gotten that town lakes, I can't recall which one. I've not heard anything from the back. WCI now followed through on that with Charles. Charles and I have a couple of things we need to get back and forth on, including that PLE. So, I'm just gonna send a call with him.
Well, that Fairway Lakes could come into play on the design on the roundabout. Just, they're gonna be dealing with somebody that doesn't own it, doesn't even exist.
Yeah, and, and my probably also provides some additional positioning for the district in, in both areas. Both Commerce Lakes Drive on the east side, and if we own Fairway Lakes Drive. Because they don't want to go through them. Arguably, they, if we don't convey the land to them.
They can.
Right, then there's a cost to that, then. And you're at the benefit of the district.
Ever for a street light?
Yeah, we know. It might be possible in negotiations to resolving on a domain act.
The street lights even operational, will we shut one?
No, I'm talking about traffic lamps instead of roundabouts.
And one other aspect too is, I noticed that if one of our brewing companies is buying that funny-shaped piece of bar.
Yes, yes, you see that.
Yeah, that's right on the east remote section of Commerce Lakes Drive.
When are they coming to us for utilities?
They're outside the district.
I know they are. Right now, they're outside the district, but they don't have any facilities there. What are they gonna do?
It might be interesting, and again, that may, you know, maybe even talk to them about.
Does everybody know where that is? That little piece, triangle?
We're working on an out-of-district surcharge rate.
Yeah, so if you provide a service agreement, and if Lee County approves it, they could, you know, I.
Alls that's gonna do is raise the price of my beer over there. Still do that.
The district may get a special rate.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'll get with Charles on it. I apologize, I guess I tracked with the other issue involving the county. So, I'll get with Charles, man, and try to wrap up with the WCI on that.
And the new RV storage facility, I mean, that's kind of, we just need, we just want him to drop that, don't we?
Well, I, I think we still may want them to give us that disclaimer, because in the future, depending how, I'm not gonna put a lot of work in there, just gotta be budgetary.
What are you talking about?
There is a restriction on utilization of the property that would be considered for the new RV storage site.
It has to be apart.
Yeah, it has to be apart. But I think it's worthwhile, I'll get that done now before anybody else changes hands over WCI. Get that disclaimer.
That we can use it for anything long, basically is what you were trying to do.
Yes, I think it's still worthwhile trying to do it.
All right. Anybody have any questions for our attorney, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Can we get this in? All right, thank you, Tony.
Thank you, ma'am chair. If I could indulge maybe a couple of minutes. We have a gentleman, I thought he was gonna come in earlier, but he wanted to address the board. And he's been in several times before to talk about utility rates and tiers. And I think, Mr. Shaker, you wanna get up and address your issue? Our public comment time is over, but I saw you were there, so if we could maybe squeeze you in. And I think, I'm not gonna frame his argument for him, but I think it has to do with our base tier, whether it's twenty-five thousand fifty, and whether it's fifty thousand per billing period or every two months, or twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, fifty thousand gallons per month. And I'll let him, we have a brief discussion, but bring up his points, and I'll be glad to respond to it.
Five minutes.
All right, Charles Shaker, Hatton Park. We discussed earlier, a couple of months ago, I think it was in April, about the tier one. I said it was zero to twenty-five thousand, and I argued it should be zero to fifty thousand to be equal with all the other ERCs under the irrigation there. And when I got my bill the other day, I see that they're still charging it zero to twenty-five thousand for tier one. And it should have been changed. I thought we all agreed to that, that was gonna be zero to fifty thousand a month. So, where are we at on that?
Well, our.
I didn't think we agreed to change it.
I, I thought we did, because it was a math error.
But what we did was we left the fifty thousand, but it was fifty thousand gallons per billing period, not fifty thousand gallons per month.
No, it has to be fifty thousand per month to be with, equal with all the other ERCs on there. That's what we talked about.
I slipped since then, but I thought that the argument that he made had merit because it did not follow the other, what do you call it?
The calculations.
Yeah, yeah.
And the calculations.
But I didn't remember, I don't remember what was, I slipped since then.
Sure, and under the, under the meter ERCs, and, you know, I'll give the, the other side from rate making, the board can set their tiers wherever they want to set them, and we, we set them looking at consumption. But right now, eighty-one percent of our customers are in that tier one, that fifty thousand gallons per two months billing cycle. Eighty-one percent of our customers are in that. Sixteen percent of them go into the tier two, and twenty percent of them are in the tier three. And a lot of times, you don't see much flex in that top end because those heavy water users, they aren't that concerned with what they're paying for the water. So, and when we designed that, we understand there's an ARC difference, but we're also collecting a bigger fee on that monthly base facility charge from those larger meters. So, we do it a lot by revenue. But the two reasons that we set it that way, you know, one, it was conservation and also send a pricing signal. And I think you're billing up twenty-three dollars.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, about, about that because of that tier. But you're also looking at somebody who's using in excess of sixty thousand gallons a month. So, I'm gonna stick by the rate in the fifty thousand tier every two months in the billing cycle from the staff that was approved by the board, and the ERCs, as you're saying, proportionally don't work up. We're getting our revenue from the base facility charge.
Well, you just decreased your base by half, as of what you were collecting prior to this new schedule. Now, you were overcharging for four years approximately, as far as the, the rental on the meters. You're now going back to where it should be for anybody that had one inch or larger. The problem is, when you doubled your rate for your base charge on your meters, the last time you approved this back in twenty-twelve, I believe it was. You also doubled the amount of water that they were allowed to use also. For instance, a one-inch should only be allowed to have sixty-two thousand five hundred gallons per month. Currently, they are allowed to have one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per month. Double the amount they're supposed to have. Now, if you take out your calculator and figure out how much money you are losing every month on these one-inch and larger meters, you probably fall out of your chair. Because you're charging them fifty cents per one thousand gallon, when you should be charging them a dollar fifty, or it's a two dollars now, the new one, when you're paying. When you get into tier two. So, you essentially spread that one hundred and twenty-five thousand into two months. So, you're not collecting your conservation rate for that whole month, if they max it out at one hundred and twenty-five thousand. You're losing a thousand dollars per year on every one-inch meter. And it goes up from there as you get higher in your meters. Two inches, probably gonna be two thousand, maybe three thousand dollars a year for every single one. So, if you want to make it equal and keep the residents at twenty-five thousand gallons per month for our meter, then you should decrease the one-inch and higher by half. The amount that you're allowing them to have.
And, and your basis for that is essentially the ERC rate, the ratio?
Yeah. Now, if you go back, I do have the paperwork here. I know I only got five minutes. But I got a schedule here from two thousand and twelve that shows you how much water that each meter is supposed to have, based on its size, for irrigation. And if you go to your twenty-fourteen, that's when the last time you guys approved one, let's back to twenty-fourteen. So, you can see where everything has doubled, in twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen, for irrigation only. Your meter charge doubled, and the amount of water that they were allowed to use doubled. And it's been that way now since twenty-eighteen, and now you approved this new one. You did decrease the usage charge for your meter by half for one-inch and larger, but you kept the amount of water they can use the same. So, they're getting a better deal yet than what they were for the last four years. Because you just decreased the amount of usage charge.
Who, who did the, or was our rating installed on this? I don't remember. I don't remember who was.
Will Dan.
Will.
Will Dan, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I, I think it'd be a good idea, I, I think you got the point. I think we need to go back and look at it, because we are not, we're following an ERC-based deal, except for the first bracket. I think we need to get a resolution from him as to what, what, why, why did he do it that way?
And part of that is, if we look at it from a revenue side, you know, designing, we need, we need revenue, and a lot of times, even though those larger meters don't get that much water, those people aren't using that much water.
And I think we settled on it, because conservation's been important, because some people weren't using exorbitant amounts. So, they're watering their lawns every day.
Now, I'd have to argue on that one. One thing you guys aren't taking into consideration is the size of the properties. You're required to have one inch of water a week, I mean, per week, to keep your water, for your lawn looking nice. One inch of water per week.
Are we talking potable, or are we talking irrigation?
Irrigation. If I had a yard that's only a hundred square feet, let's say, it's gonna take a lot less water than a yard that has a thousand square feet. It's not that I'm wasting water, watering that thousand square feet. It's what it requires to keep it green. Based on this twenty-five thousand gallons per month that we have. Based on this twenty-five thousand gallons per month that we have now, I can water my lawn once a week for three weeks out of the month, and my twenty-five thousand is gone. And or for me to water it twice a week, four times a, or four weeks out of the month, I gotta have that doubled. I gotta have fifty thousand gallons. And that's not I'm wasting it. That's what I need.
You know, I, I have to say, it's no different than a larger lot. If you have a larger house, your electric bill's higher.
Exactly.
Your lawn bill's higher, so that's a part of the, and we'll keep it out of that.
But when you're coming up to, oh, the average guy uses six thousand, well, maybe that's so, but you've got a little yard. It's not that we are wasting water, as far as not being conservationists. It's, that's what we need.
And I'll, I'll go back to eighty-one percent of our customers are in tier one.
Thank you, Mr. Shaffer.
Mr. Shaffer, I'll, I'll get with the consultant, and we'll lay that out, and those amounts, and I'll get back within the next week or two. And we'll revisit again in the next four meetings with the actual numbers like that.
And I said, you really shouldn't look at that. For it to be correct, if you wanna keep mine at twenty-five thousand, you're gonna have to decrease every other meter larger than five eighths by three-quarters. There are water about that they're allowed. You have to cut that in half. Then it would be equal all the way down. But you're losing a lot of money every year. You guys know how many meters you have out there, one-inch and larger.
Well, we do, and compared to our five-eighths inch meters, again, eighty-one percent of our customers are in that tier, and those are the people we were trying to impact with that rate signal and conservation. But I'll get with the consultant, and we'll come back with some hard numbers for you.
We've got a little bit of time left before the public hearing starts. We can either take a break, or we can do supervisor comment, slash other ones.
No.
Doug?
Is it worth it when you're comments or take a break?
Yeah, I'm asking a question. Should we do comments or?
All right, we can, we'll do it in the comments.
Well, wait, wait, if, if we're gonna have a follow-up to the public hearing, let's take a break and then do the comments after the public hearing.
That's fine. I'm gonna do that, too. I'm one minute to hold. So, we will take a break until five-thirty when the public hearing-